Six, 2021 Village Council Regular Meeting. And it is now 7:01. And we welcome you for joining us tonight. We call this meeting to order. And we will follow that up with the Pledge of Allegiance from Trustee Hayden, please.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Jonathan, please roll up, please. Dialis?
Present.
George?
Here.
Green?
Yes.
Hayden?
Here.
Nybel?
Here.
Randazzo?
Here.
Bryce?
Here.
Thank you. Item number four with the approval of the agenda.
I make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Trustee Green's board.
All right. We have a motion by Trustee Hayden, supported by Trustee Green to approve the agenda as presented. Do we have any questions, comments, or discussion?
Yes. If you wouldn't mind, I would like to move the Heritage Garden Committee under the number 10 trustee committee updates to number one. Patty Olson is here to take any comments and to go over the survey results. So that way she can leave after the planning mission of her presentations.
So is it okay to switch one of these?
That would be great.
Is that okay, Katie?
Switch or just move eight to one and then everything gets bumped down.
If you just move the two, you don't have to move everything.
Right.
It's up to the two of them. Much easier. Any other questions, comments, or discussion, anything we need to address? All right. So are we looking now for a motion as amended?
I will amend my motion to state as amended.
And I will support.
So we have a motion on the table from Trustee Hayden, supported by Trustee Green to approve the agenda as amended. Any questions for you though? George?
Yes.
Green?
Yes.
Hayden?
Yes.
Nybel?
Yes.
Randazzo?
Yes.
Dialis?
Yes.
Bryce?
Yes.
Thank you very much. That motion carries seven zero. Looking for the approval of the council minutes of June 28, 2021.
I'll make a motion to approve the council minutes of July 12, 2021.
Trustee George, support.
We have a motion on the table by Trustee Nybel, supported by Trustee George. Do we have any questions, comments, or discussion on the minutes of June 28? All right. Jenna, please. Green?
Yes.
Hayden?
Yes.
Nybel?
Yes.
Randazzo?
Yes.
Dialis?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Bryce?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries seven zero. Next up is item number six, and those will be the dispersments, which end July 15, 2021. And that is in the amount of $22,324.27. Looking to entertain a motion.
Make motion to approve the dispersment report. The amount mentioned. Support. For the $22,324.
We have a motion on the table by Trustee Green, supported by Trustee Nybel. Do we have any questions, comments, or discussion on dispersments? All right, Jenna, please. Hayden?
Yes.
Nybel?
Yes.
Randazzo?
Yes.
Dialis?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Green?
Yes.
Bryce?
Yes.
And that motion carries seven zero. Thank you. Item number seven, the same name as our public comments. Please keep in mind at this time, it's on agenda items only. If there's anything that you had a question for us or something that you'd like to share with us, that is an agenda item only at this time, we'd love to hear you. Have you stepped forward. Keep in mind, you do have three minutes and we will politely take turns. Further on down the agenda is non-agenda items from the public. So just keep that in mind. We'll have two questions for us. So any public comments on agenda items at this time? Please go ahead and kind of raise your hand or step up or stand up or whatever you're comfortable with. All right. Well, next time. Thank you. Item eight gives our consent agenda. The same names consent agenda contains the treasurer's report of June 2021, the monthly revenue and expense report, the Brandon Township Board meeting minutes of June 20, the personnel committee minutes of July 1st, the redevelopment ready committee minutes of July 13th, the Heritage Garden Committee minutes of July 13th, the Ortonville Community Historical Society minutes of June 18th, and the ordinance violation tracking report. We've been very busy this month. Looking to entertain a motion on the consent agenda.
Motion to approve the consent agenda. Support.
Thank you. We have a motion on the table by Trustee Green, supported by Trustee Nybel. Do we have any questions, comments at this time? All right. We're ready, please, Jenna. Nybel?
Yes.
Randazzo?
Yes.
Dialis?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Green?
Yes.
Hayden?
Yes.
Bryce?
Yes.
That motion carries seven zero. Thank you. Item number nine, this evening, we are excited to have a couple of presentations. The first up will be the Main Street Oakland County Presentations. And those will be handed over to the DDA for the presentations this evening. Who would like to start for us?
Can we get a chair for the lady that just came in? Is it possible to get an extra chair?
Thank you. So every year for our select level of major communities, we go through an evaluation process and they give remarks on ten categories that are saying, you know, they're meeting or achieving certain goals as a major organization. Last year, obviously, was a different year. We did do the formal process, but we still internally reviewed all of our organizations, all the communities to see how they handled last year. And we know that everyone really did work hard and did a lot to keep things going. So that's why we're really happy to be able to win again the National Majority Center and the Majority Oakland County Certification that the Ortonville DDA is an accredited program again. I just want to say, you know, again, as we looked at last year, there were so many things that the staff and volunteers worked on. They were invaluable in their assistance with keeping the out working of the county. Partnership with the restaurant grant that we did. And then things that, you know, again, it was, it wasn't business as usual. And yet there was all this progress for you man and things like your retail challenge and developing your app. You know, that's a real sign of a successful organization. So all of that being said, why don't you guys come on?
If I could just make a brief comment about our year. Certainly, one of the things we had to recognize is the partnership that we have with Main Street Oakland County. Sorry that might back us. But it was a crazy year. And we talked about the year being one adaptation after another with what we're dealing with. And really, the leadership through Main Street Oakland County and then all of our peers, all of the 22 other Main Street Oakland County communities. It was like a true partnership where we were able to share ideas and bounce ideas off everybody. And concepts that others were implementing and seeing success now became, you know, the real R and B that we're often duplicating. That makes Main Street Oakland County sound a strong program. So we have to thank them for their input and their support as well.
Congratulations. We're very, very proud to have you be a part of us.
14 years in a row.
Never missed one, right?
No.
That's good.
Congratulations. All right. We'll let you follow up and take it from there.
Let's see. I'm trying to think of when this was. In February of this year, we applied for a grant, which is a partnership with Main Street Oakland County and Genesis Credit Union is the Spirit of Main Street grant. And we've received this grant before. This grant is also supporting our retail challenge, which has kicked off. The current grant application that we've received an award for is a downtown online marketplace. Coming out of the pandemic, research shows that consumer habits have kind of set in on this online order. They like that. They like to be able to see, even if they decide to come down and pick up their order from their merchant, they have become more accustomed to doing some of their shopping online. And so when the DDA conducted our recovery planning, our normal strategic planning, but it took a theme of recovery this year. One of the components that was identified is this online marketplace that all of our merchants, even service industries, can be a part of this marketplace, this digital economy that we can put out there. And it also gives us an opportunity to bring in businesses from outside the DDA to participate as well, to create a more robust marketplace online. And so the first grant application that we submitted was for the online marketplace. And if I could, I would go right into the second grant that we are receiving. Right around that same time, I received some contact from Jessica Davis, a local resident who is an entrepreneur. She is starting a business with her husband here in Ortonville. The business is going to be located within the DDA district. It's going to fill the final suite at 4 North Ortonville Road, next to the pharmacist and Bear's Fitness. And on Jessica's behalf, we applied for the Spirit of Main Street grant. And the grant allows for different eligibility for applicants, one of which is a startup business. And so Jessica's business Fifth and Penn is a startup business that qualifies for this grant. And Teresa is here from Genesis Credit Union. She is the corporate social responsibility manager. I can read all the way out of those emails. She's also a resident of the area. And shortly after she became the manager, we had an opportunity to speak and she's done nothing but supported the Ortonville ever since and we appreciate all that. You would have done all that, Genesis Credit Union does the same for me.
I actually want to say, first of all, I have two very giant sized checks for you.
If you don't mind coming up here.
Yeah.
So just so that you know, there are businesses and organizations from all around Oakland County that apply for these grants. And so when the applications come in in partnership with Main Street Oakland County, we go through all of the applications and look at the new businesses that are starting up and the different types of ideas that businesses are bringing. And what we're looking for is like, seriously, who's going to make it? And is this idea something that is just a small little idea that's not really going to get off the ground? Or is this something that makes sense for funding? And I can follow my shopping online and through Ortonville. So that was fantastic and thrilled to have you guys in town. Did a little bit of research because I have no idea what this is. But I think with what your company does, that they offer vehicles and Harley is that that's going to help support our business, right? Which is fantastic. So welcome to the neighborhood. Matt does an amazing job. He is very lucky to have him. He does promote the Ortonville area and in a great way. We're actually sponsors of all of the events that he's having as well. So congratulations.
I don't know if anybody has any questions for Jessica or DDA.
Would you remind us, Jessica, of your opening Saturday?
Yes. So we're going to be doing a soft opening. We're going to be coming on Friday, this coming Friday at 4:30. We'll be open for a couple of hours. And our big grand opening is going to be Saturday at 11:00 a.m. We'll open until 6:00.
So when we come downtown to the farmer's market, we can wander on over because you're right here at the end of the street? We appreciate it. We're excited. Thank you.
All right. We're looking forward to it, everybody. So we are looking very forward to having that.
Well, thank you very much. And again, we're very excited for the DDA and all of their efforts. And it does not go unnoticed, the entire board and volunteers are amazing and continue to, no matter what is thrown at you, you go with the change and up in the throughout flow. And here we are. So thank you very much. All right. Item 9B is the Planning Commission. If you don't mind having Bob step up, please. Bob, do you have that big truck with you?
Yes.
You are the planning commissioner.
Not anymore.
One more. Yes, please.
Larry, you've dedicated number 13 years of planning commission in our community. Although at our first meeting without you, we were about to have our show. I thought we watched for a year on Zoom. Your work requires you to be virtually from home at your desk. And there's one thing missing. We just want everyone to know who you are. So we're going to present this so you can put it on your desk. So now everybody will, when you do virtually with work, who you are. Your expertise in planning and planning rules has raised the efficiency of the current commission. Your knowledge and ability of research will be greatly missed. Although you are still assisting on projects that are, have not been completed. Larry, on behalf of Ortonville Village Planning Commission, the Village Council, and the Village Residents, we thank you for your dedicated service. You've been greatly missed. Sure. It's been my pleasure with all of you on the time to pitch you. You guys are a great bunch. And I'm not happy, I'm so far from us. I'm still glad.
Thank you very much. And Larry, I don't want to start rumors, but I hear they're going to draw out your project really fast. So you stay up. We appreciate you. Thank you. Item 10 is the trustee committee updates. In this evening, we will start with the Heritage Garden Committee.
Okay. So in, we had the survey results with summaries. And Patty Olson is here this evening to just go over a little bit of it. And then if you have any questions, you can ask either Patty or herself. At Shermaian, you saw the survey and the beautiful boards. Melanie did. Thank you, Melanie, for all the work that you did. Always amazing what you do in Oakland. Thank you. So I will behead 67 responses. Forty-six percent of them were from the township, 37 from the village. The majority of respondents were ages 46 to 60, which is 41%. With only 7% from the business owners. People would like to see benches, that's 68%. Followed by lighting. And a large percent, 90% of respondents, would like to see the space used for social gatherings and activities, with many interested in using the space year round. 24% would like to volunteer their time and special skills, but we only got 12 people to contribute. So several names were suggested honoring people. A lot of people put in commons, square, gathering corner, alcohol, milk, in with the names of what they thought it should be. So at a glance, like I said, 67 responses. So going down the list, benches were the most requested or suggested. Lighting, flower planters, closets, tables and chairs, gazebo with grass and flowers, warming station, garden cart, a bike rack, a bertha, brick favors, seal concrete, or manure cultures. So we have 90% would like to see used for social gatherings and stuff like that. 80% would like to see the space used for additional activities, such as art installation and maybe a Christmas market or alcohol shops, which are very popular around Christmas time. 68% say they would like the space used all four seasons. And that's what we have. That's what we had on our survey. So is there any, if we have any questions or any other ideas we'd like to share?
I just have a, that's not even a concern. I had filled out one for what I, a recommendation for what it to be called, but I don't see it on the list anywhere. So I don't know if you listed everything or not.
I thought I did. But those are all.
Okay. As long as you have, that's all I can.
Yes. You have all the names. All the names were hand, had to be hand taken afterwards.
Gotcha. Yeah. Perfect.
So yeah, we do have, I believe it was two that's yours. We did have other names also. Yes, it is, yes. Ronson is also a name and Kima. So there was.
I'm excited to see it go forward.
Yes.
We appreciate the work you did. I know there was a little bit of a challenge with the weather. I know there was a little bit of a challenge, you know, trying to get. So we appreciate the community input that we do have. We appreciate everything you've compiled and the effort that you've put in.
Yes.
I do have just one observation about the survey. I think it's great, the presentation and the way you've presented the results from the survey. I am a little concerned about the numbers because doing the math, 67 responses, 37% from the village comes to roughly 25 responses within the village. I do know that the survey went out by email directly to council members, planning commission, DDA. And I saw at least half of the council members respond. And if that's similar to DDA and planning commission responses, then that means that we probably can trigger about 12 to 13 responses from people on the public bodies, which to me, that only leaves like 12 to 13 people who are just plain village residents that respond. To me, that's, I'm a little, I just wanted to show you because I think that we need to, moving forward, like I said, really good analysis of the results, but I think we need to think about what can we do to improve response from village residents in the future? Because to me, that's less than 1% of our village residents. And I'm not quite sure that that's going, that what we got back is going to be fully representative of our community. But I think a great job on your part for what you did. But you know, we need, and as a council, we need to work on that too in terms of a public engagement plan to try to come up with more avenues and more ways to get that out to the community. That's my.
And correct me if I'm wrong, this isn't the first input because you've received input from master plan. Planning Commission has received input. DDA has received input when they were touching on the project. So there's multiple places beforehand? And I don't believe this is the last time you'll have public input, really, is it?
No.
So it's kind of just, I think, a step in the input process? And just keep in mind, not everybody uses their name, but.
Well, even the ones anonymous, they, you know.
Right. But I'm just saying.
I'm just going by the math. And I think that I just would have liked to see a little more input from just general residents within the village. Because this is a village space. It's not, you know, outside of our community. I saw responses from White Lake even. So it's, which is great that people there are interested in our little space, but I'm not sure, I would probably focus more on what our village residents are looking for.
Patty, where do you see yourself going from here now? So you've got these results. I'm just kind of curious. What, from a personal standpoint, where do you see yourself doing it? And from a timeframe standpoint and things like that?
I can easily, it's a big thing. But, um, let's see. Go ahead. The, all these surveys, summaries, everything that we have compiled, they've been sent to Oakland County already. So they designed an article, I'm not sure his title, but he has all the information. He actually was in contact with me and Matt today and the village manager, asking for some additional pictures. So we've sent him updated pictures today. So he's working on it right now, which is lovely.
Good. What's your idea, is that what?
Yes. He's with all the input. And he has, you know, actually, I think two years ago, I remember Matt started speaking about. Year ago, two years ago?
About both the gardens.
Two years ago.
With Ron Keel.
He started speaking with Ron Keel.
There have been multiple serves and researches. He's been brought in multiple times.
Okay, so he's really familiar with that space and the area.
Okay.
And he is up to date with what it looks like exactly today as well. And he was just here for a conference last week.
Little Business Connect, he was here Wednesday.
So he checked the area out too. So he seemed very enthused and he's right away asking questions, which was great, because there's only one of him over in Oakland County.
Okay.
So I saw that as a great sign.
Good, alright, good.
Yeah.
He has great affinity for Ortonville. He really, I'm sorry, I just forgot. What do you mean?
Thanks.
Are you emotional or something? Yeah, he's, he's worked on countless projects, facade designs for commercial buildings. He did a adaptive just report on the Red Barn sadly. So he has great affinity for our community. Very good. Thanks, Patty.
Thank you.
Anything else on the heritage committee? Melanie, anything else on the heritage committee?
Um, yes, I have one, one more thing. They were, no, that's, no, finally. Thank you.
Alright, next up is the historical society committee.
Historical society, uh, meeting, the last one they had. Let's see, business that's coming up, the blacksmith shop will be open during the September Fest. That'll be their grand opening on that. And Tom Roberts is, is the master blacksmith person there. So that'll be something they're looking forward to. August tenth, they're going to have a membership meeting. I believe it's going to be in Crossmith Park for purposes of trying to solicit new members coming in to the historical society. There's that from the historical standpoint. And, and of course, from the senior center. Also, the historical, or historical society in the building is open again on Saturdays to remind people Saturday mornings up till early afternoon. And that's that for them. And for the senior center, they're going to go home on bingo on Fridays and things like that. And of course, the lunch program has been reinstated, so that's it.
Thank you. Next up is the park.
Tanya, I have to throw one, you want this as my personal note? I really do hope we can slap some paint on, on, on at least a partial buildings this summer. I'll just let it go at that. I know we have funds. And, and it would be nice to, even if we dress up like the wall that the people see the most or something like that, just a starting point, I think that would be good, just to get some progress on schoolhouse and.
Pat, did I see in the minutes that they are, the historical societies looking at getting some updated bids for the painting?
Ryan Olson, that's it. Ryan, did we ever get ahold of the, the master painter that would come to town and give us any ideas? Or no? Just curious.
Between myself and our DPW supervisor, we've reached out to several preservation painters, and we've had trouble getting any bid back. And so we've been on a mast and not taken any of the bids. And so it's, and it's been nice weather to be out painting. So it's been a challenge to get painters to come bid on a project. But it is one we would like to tackle at least one wall. There's, I want to say the south wall is the, the one that's pretty rough.
That's the, yeah, that's the worst one, yeah. Something like that at least would be progress, yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you. How about the park's?
There is a meeting this Wednesday at one with the supplier, hopefully to give us information on, you know, how many courts we can put in realistically, you know, what way they should face, what, you know, what we need. And then there, next Tuesday, there is a, or August third, there is a, a meeting with the volunteers that I talked about. And Fred and I will be meeting with them at six P M. on the third, and see where we can go in that. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. And next up is the IT committee.
Okay, we have not had an IT committee meeting since June, but I will say is, this is that Ryan has been moving forward and we've been moving forward. They've been taking care of some of the items and topics that came up at that meeting. And I've kept well informed on that. You know, when we get to a point where we feel it's needed, we'll bring everybody together again for another meeting, but for right now, topics are moving forward and I'm getting good updates. I think one thing I would like to do is see if we could get a meeting where I could meet with IT right, see if we can get some representative from them coming at some point, so I can meet with them just to review our, our current, you know, layouts and infrastructure and all that that they're managing for us. And then this is sort of in between IT committee and personnel. We do know from reviewing things that there are some topics within the personnel policies that do touch on IT, such as cybersecurity and social media policies. So make sure you get anything related to that into, so we can make sure that we can take a look at from the IT committee side and also make sure that they get those in there for updates for personnel policy.
Thank you. And next up is the personnel committee.
Personnel committee met July first, and we have another meeting August third. But Ryan's got the notes in the packet, but I, we've already discussed it before. We didn't turn it over to, to Ryan regarding this.
That's the majority of, we've got a few personnel things we're, we're talking through. I'll talk about a few more in the manager's report as well. But August third is the next meeting for the personnel committee. The main item, among other things, will be discussing the personnel policy updates that everyone is providing to us, right? Everyone's doing that by the end of the week, as mentioned several times. This is the first time I'll say at this meeting, I'll probably say it four more times. But by the end of the week, everyone will be sending those. We've also had a few conversations about other policy resources we have access to. So Larry and I met today with HR community, we'll talk more about that in our, in our next meeting. But there's lots of good, good resources for us to tap into that are already included and planned where we're a part of. So personnel will be very busy starting August third, because everyone is going to provide their input on the personnel policy by the end of the week.
Does anybody know?
You did, for sure. There were a few other things, kind of. Yours was the, yours was via email, which was very helpful, so we can refer back to it digitally. I've had lots that I've jotted down. I have a running list in Trello of notes that people have mentioned to me. So please, the more the merrier. If you already have and want to again, feel free.
Thank you. Alright, how about the land commission, please?
We meet on August the third, and right now, we are just going through our workshop webinars individually. So I'm really, nothing new to report.
Great. Thank you. Wait, finally, some committee, please?
Okay, the style guide, all of you received in your packet. So that is completed. And Paramount is creating a website for wearables and different items that they will review with the village office soon, so that you can order shirts or pants or whatever the, you know, the Paramount comes up with and what the village decides to offer on that website. So that will be, that, that'll be fun. And Tanya, at Paramount is terrific to work with, I just want to throw that out there. She makes it so easy. We did receive a rendering from ASI that we're currently discussing our options with on that. We're trying to get another meeting pulled together. And it's frustrating trying to pull the meetings together. Everyone has different schedules, and it's always the same one or two people doing all the work in the committees. I don't know if other committees are having that, that challenge, but I am having that challenge with a couple committees. So I will work away at that. A bid was submitted to the village office and the committee to review. And hopefully, by the end of the week, we can get that bid online for the phase two.
Can I add to that with?
Yes.
In your packet is the brand guidelines. This, maybe pull this one out and put it on the fridge. This will be your brand bible for all things village of Ortonville. Keep it handy if you have any questions, if you're thinking about putting the logo on anything, or you see it on a document, you see the old one, and you want to make sure we put the new one on there, refer to the brand guidelines from, from now until forever. But keep it handy, we'll refer to it often.
Yeah, so great job too. Thank you for doing that.
Question or comment, I guess, on the wearables. It might be nice to have, I guess, have a little sampling of some of the wearables and a QR code at the village offices, so somebody can come in and look at that stuff, and type the QR code, and they can do, you know, a link on the website where they can purchase those things. That would be, have an option, I think, to go to Paramount or maybe, or they can vote the website that they see in the office.
Yeah, it's a good idea. And I'm hoping that, you know, actually, it's something that, like the DPW, their uniforms, and that's an office thing. So you keep us posted on that.
We'll see.
Yeah, right, but that's a good idea. I like that. Thank you.
Well, I will say that I've seen the new business card layout, and it looks really nice. When Brian gave his, I mean, Ryan gave his business card to the power plant representative today.
Looks good, looks good. Looks more professional for sure. So we're getting that, right? We're getting it.
We have a brand.
Yes, I do.
Oh, we appreciate it. Thank you. Next up is streets committee.
Actually, I think this month, as most of the projects are in ready, and polls are ready to feedback, we're going to meet this month.
Thank you. And last up is the DDA updates. Just a feedback that the food trucks last Thursday was a successful evening for everybody. Lots of wonderful feedback, so we appreciate all the work that was put into that. As the two grants that we received tonight shows, the work and the time and the heart that goes into these businesses is not unnoticed. And so that's something they strive to work hard for all the time. Matt briefly mentioned last Tuesday was the Business Connect, which was sponsored from Oakland County Dry Local Businesses for learning sessions, support, networking, things like that. And we had businesses from Groveland, Hallie, Oxford, Ortonville, Brandon, I'm sure I'm missing other communities, but lots of communities around us. So not only was it a great time to network and share what you have available, we also had resources from Oakland County here that were able to share some of the things to provide those businesses. So it was a really, a great morning. And our two new board members are diving right in and working on projects and getting involved. So we appreciate the support that the council to have them in here.
The food truck, I've been doing great events. I just see a lot of people come, I was unable to partake in it. I was curious as to, do we have any idea, with events like that in town, if we have anyone that is, that's kind of do a rough count, seeing how many people draws in town for that event? It seems like a lot of people that night.
Are you volunteering? Because Thursday was man hour.
Yeah, actually, no.
So, no, we don't have manpower.
Well, I say walk around the property, you see a person in the village, I understand that.
I understand that. I'm just saying, we don't have manpower, like, to get someone down here to do that right now.
We do have the counters.
We have the counters. And as I was saying, it is a good question. I know with the market, you know, you can get the, the students to come volunteer or something like that. That could be something that we continue to pursue possibly for the DDA ones as well.
It can be a little tricky though, because a lot of people circulate that.
Yeah, just to get a rough idea, is it, does any event, you draw a hundred people or do you draw thousands of people?
Oh, it's well over a hundred, for sure.
For sure, but just trying to get, it would be nice to have some feedback.
Yes.
We could ask, we could ask, and it's something that we discuss. We do count at the farmer's market. Food trucks seem to be a little bit more overwhelming, so we have a broken track for that. Sure, but we do get asked, especially about the food trucks that may wait to come.
So were they, I guess, that, that leads in the last question, I guess. So were, were those vendors happy, would they all come back again? Have you got a response every time?
Yes, we're going to get more response.
Yes, a good question.
Yes.
I've worked very hard to not overbook food trucks for any given event. I've worked very hard to take care of the food trucks so that I maintain a rapport with them that ensures word of mouth that anytime I ask for food trucks to come to Ortonville, they will come, because this is a very small community. This is very small potatoes compared to places like Royal, Good Birmingham, and Rochester. And when they hear I'm renting thirteen trucks in for a food truck value, that number can be a little scary, knowing how small we are. However, I have worked very hard to ensure that those trucks know that when they come here, I'm not booking thirteen trucks because I'm greedy. I'm booking fifteen trucks because I need that trust to feed them off people who are going to come.
Yeah, I can share some feedback, because I was up there too. And I was also asking afterwards, towards the end there, how some vendors were doing. I only heard one that said he was a little bit so-so, and that was one that was not a barbecue truck. So I think, but the barbecue trucks, they, they all said they did a really good business. Did we have some sellout actually too?
Yes.
Yeah, we usually have food trucks that actually sell out at these events, so.
Normally, the trucks are here for at least an hour after the event ends, cleaning up and taking care of things. And at nine thirty, there was only three trucks still here. And that's wonderful.
Yeah, that is.
So they were packed up and gone because they didn't have much to clean up. They were, didn't have much left, so. Yeah, we're very, very particular. This is the first time we've done themed truck values, so this is the first time we've had that.
Does he?
Yeah. It was really interesting. I'm not sure, I can be, I'm sure of how they're offering to you, but they offered it very well.
It was very. And we should just throw a plug out there, DDA would love volunteers. So please contact the village office. We are, they are always looking for volunteers, so please, don't be shy of that.
Alright. Moving on this evening, unfinished business. We do have nothing on the agenda this evening, which leads us to our new business, which is item number twelve. The first item is the fiscal year 2022 smart municipal credit and the credit contract. And I will send that over to manager, Dennis, please.
Thank you. So in your packet, you'll see the contract for the municipal credit, community credit for fiscal year 2022. This is one we've done for several years, far back as I could find. But Smart, as you know, is our regional transportation group. They use Act 51 funds and in support of local municipalities. And historically, we've transferred our funding to Brandon Dante, who manages that, that, those funds for the entire region. So this is a, a contract we've done for many years. So I, my recommended motion is that the, the council approve the municipal credit and community credit contact, contract for fiscal year 2022 as, as presented.
I make a motion to approve the municipal credit and community credit contract for fiscal year 2022 as presented. Support?
Thank you. Motion on the table by trustee Hayden, supported by trustee Green. If you have any questions, comments, discussion at this time. Alright, Jenna, please. Randazzo?
Yes.
Dialis?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Green?
Yes.
Hayden?
Yes.
Nigel?
Yes.
Bryce?
Yes.
That motion carries seven zero. Thank you very much. Next up is the 2020, 2020. Thank you very much. Next up is the 2020-2021 budget amendment adjustments, and I will also send it over to manager, Manas, please.
So in your packet, you'll find the 2020-2021 budget adjustment request. Our treasurer has faithfully created this document. Part of the joys of municipal accounting is that there are several accounts that have to be zeroed out at the end of the year. So the ones where we either allotted too much or too little, we get to zero those out. So you'll see the total revenue adjustments totaling $30,972.58. And you'll see the reasons over on the right-hand column on that spreadsheet. My recommended motion would be that the village council approve the 2020-2021 budget adjustment as presented.
Trustee George, support.
I didn't have to make a motion.
I make a motion.
I don't make them, I just recommend.
I make a motion that the revised budget that our village manager has presented be approved.
Support. Could we include the amount, please?
Pardon?
Could we include the amount, please?
Yes, of $30,972.58.
Yes. All right, we have a motion on the table by trustee George, supported by trustee Green. If you have any questions, comments, or discussion with budget adjustments. All right, Jenna, please. Dialis?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Green?
Yes.
Hayden?
Yes.
Nigel?
Yes.
Randazzo?
Yes.
Bryce?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion carries seven zero. Please tell both wonderful job, we appreciate it.
So that is my reminder to let you know of the audit of the 2020-2021 fiscal year is going to be happening the first week of August. So Beth has been up to here with all kinds of fun projects and budget adjustments and ARP money and all kinds of good stuff. And the audit is yet to come, very near future.
Wonderful, thank you. Next up is item 13, and that will be our managers' reports. Send that over to manager, Manas, please.
I'll try to go quick. And one I should have added to the agenda with regrets, I have to let you know that one of our DPW workers will, Trasinga, has put in his two weeks' notice. So you will see a job posting for a DPW position later this week. It'll be in the citizen this week. We are anxious to get it filled because it's already a pretty small group, and the work is not slowing down this summer. So we are sad to see we'll go, but we will soldier on. In your packet, let's see, I'll just go down the list, you'll see the final restaurant relief grant program report. Matt has done an amazing job spearheading this effort for us. Jen has also been incredibly helpful in the recording process and all kinds of good stuff. In a future meeting packet, you will see how we're going to spend the rest of the money that's been allocated to us. So we've already talked about it a little bit, has to do with storage, no surprises coming soon. Any questions on that? Okay, as mentioned, we will be having the 2020-2021 audit for, coming up, it'll be the first full week of August, August 9th. We'll be able to report several things ahead of time. They have a great digital, we can report some things electronically, but then they'll be here in person that week, working mostly with Beth, a little bit with Matt, a little bit with myself. So it's coming. Any questions? Okay, moving on, the village council ordinance review. Oh, I skipped, I'm sorry. Thank you. So ARP application still in process. The Michigan Treasury gave a July 27 deadline. It's not a hard deadline, it's not that you're cut off on July 27. In order to fill out the application, you have to have several different numbers from several different state and federal agencies. So it's a good housekeeping reminder to make sure we stay on top of all those things. We have not submitted it yet. I was hoping to be able to say tonight that it's in and we're ready to go, and we've got our hat in our hands and we're ready to receive the money. We should be able to get that done tomorrow, is the goal. Working through all the processes has been fun, and I was out of the office last week and it's, and with all the other treasurer things going on, I regret to say it's not done yet, but it will be in the immediate future. It is a very important one for us to know how this is possible. Questions? Okay, village council ordinance review, you've got a memo in your packet detailing this. In reviewing different ordinances, we are finding some discrepancies between the policy and practice. So one of those is the council ordinance. It talks about how trustees are to be paid quarterly, you may not be reimbursed for mileage or meals while attending training, other things like that, that that's not how we do things. So it is one of several ordinances that we will get to review in the very near future. So it's just informational at this time, but look forward to that one. Any questions?
So will the planning commission be reviewing some of these, or the council, or how are we going by topic?
That was my question, too.
Of topic.
Yeah, that's, that's why, you know, I just say we'll go through the proper channels, because some do have to originate from the planning commission, some are, can just be a resolution of the council. There's a variety of ways that we get to approve these, but we'll make sure we do our due diligence on those items. Questions? Next is the forest management plan. This is one that prior to my tighter date, it was, it was decided that the new manager would address this item within their first 45 days. I am on day 64, so I apologize for my tardiness in addressing this one. It was just brought to my attention on day 59. So I apologize. It will be worked on in the near future, a forest management plan, you know, will help us better understand what's there. It doesn't mean we can't cut trees or we're going to cut trees, it means we're going to do things in a planned way, just like a master plan, it lays out the guidelines for where we're headed in the future, so we know where the end goal is, rather than, you know, we're just going to clear it up and all because we want to, or anything like that. Does that make sense? Any questions?
Yeah, have you spoken with Bob McArthur at all about the forest management plan?
I have not.
Okay. And who will be heading that? And that's not a DNR endowed for practice, was it? A, in health?
It starts with us. There are different state, county, other entities that we'll get to work with on a forest management plan. There's a variety of them. I'm, I'm sorry, I'm not an expert on it yet, but, and I just, just started. I know enough to have written this memo.
Okay, I'm just wondering, is that being spearheaded by you, planning group? How is that? Or don't, we don't know yet, just say that.
It'll start with me, and then it may become, it will definitely have different parties involved, so it'll definitely require some planning commission input, there will be some village council input, things like that. So I know enough to be dangerous, and that's it at this point.
If you want to become an expert, sit down, take some time to sit down with Brooke Macavinsky.
Macavinsky is a, is going to be extremely helpful, we have trust, he's ready to go, a whole hundred of them in his life, so.
Okay, and if we have information to give you, give that to you? Because we have talked about this before the planning commission, so.
As of now, yes, because I'm still not up to speed on it. I would love more input. Thank you.
Yeah, just a comment on that, I think that if we had in the past better managers' reports covering these topics, you'd probably be much better informed. So I'm really happy that you have such good thorough details in your management.
Thank you. I think it's very helpful to just have a one-page, here's the breakdown, here's the story, here's the recommendation, moving on.
Yes.
Yeah, thanks. Next up is the DPW service request form. Our clerk and our DPW supervisor have created this report in your packet. Bob is a pretty approachable guy, so people stop and tell him all the time, hey, there's a limb down on the street, or hey, you know, there's a pothole in my road, things like that. So Jen has worked with Bob to create this form so that he can easily say, you know, swing by the village office. And there's a form for that, it'll also be on our website, so if people have concerns or things that they want to pass along to village staff, this form will serve that purpose pretty easily. Any questions?
Yes. Will we add that to our website? Are we going to add it such that you can pull out right on the website and submit it in? That would be ideal.
That would be ideal, we'll discuss. There's some pros and cons to that. When you're putting, because it does require some personal information, which can get tricky when filling out a fillable form, so we'll, we'll discuss. But yeah, fillable would be great.
Just one comment or suggestion, maybe, I noticed this is DPW service request, and you know, not every request that comes to the village may involve the DPW, perhaps it should be called village service request, just so that it's more generic and can be applied to any request. But I think, I think other than title, I think it's fully comprehensive.
I think it's a good idea, so that we have one place where we know everything that's being done, because I think Bob does a lot of things that we don't know.
Having some paper trail is helpful.
Yes.
Okay, good, any other questions?
Well, Bob, thank you.
Thank you. Love our, yes, that is a good idea.
This might be the fourth reminder of personnel policy input, and it would be fun to like.
Oh, that's funny.
So if you have not given me all your input on personnel policy, even if you want to come by and tell me, I will write those down for you, just let me know what you got on personnel policy. I also pencil in the temporary signage input, also at the end of July. So if you haven't, we, I've discussed it with many of you individually, if you have thoughts about temporary signage as well, it'll be coming up again here in the near future, that you'll be hearing more on that item as well.
I did give you mine by email.
Yes, you did, you had email, very helpful. Questions on those items?
So it's temporary, for the temporary signage, is weight finding involved with that, because we haven't heard any feedback.
At this time, no, I think the majority of the temporary signage is going to deal with the small kind of yard signage, and then weight finding is a separate beast, which will continue to work out with directional and all kinds of good stuff like that.
Okay.
Yeah, but more, more to come. Any questions? Okay, next up in your packet is the attorney invoice for June of 2021. You'll see the balance due of $208. There's a lot of questions that I had for our attorney. I shared with the village council via email another update, so in your next packet, you'll receive that in your packet regarding the marijuana ordinance. So that will be on our agenda for our, our next meeting, the first one in August. And due to that, our attorney invoice for next month will look different, it will be more than the amount that June was. So we're aware, we do pay our attorney hourly, and our bill will reflect that in our next invoice from then. And my last one is the DDA retail challenge. So in your packet, you'll see the flyer. Tanya, do you want to speak more to that as the?
If you don't mind, with Matt here, I would much rather Matt speak to it, because he's been there from the beginning stages in all the meetings, whereas I just get the information at board meetings, so I would appreciate it.
I tried to rope him into talking, but now it's coming from President Bryce, so.
If you don't mind, just a quick, I know it was in the paper, and we appreciate that, and I know it's been well touted, and just to continue to.
Somebody just whispered in my ear that I need to make it fast.
Shelby!
Shelby, I like that. The retail challenge is a charmed tank type pitch competition. It is the result of several, several steps that the DDA has taken in the last few years. It started with a market analysis and a business recruitment strategy, which was our technical assistance in 2017, 2018. That market analysis identified business concepts that have a good chance of being successful here, because the local consumers go elsewhere for these products. That's really what the analysis is in shop. The, I mentioned earlier that the DDA received a grant from Genesis Credit Union, Spirit of Main Street Grant for this retail challenge. We also, our 2018-2019 technical assistance funds are used for the retail challenge. Those are the primary dollars that are dedicated to the 10,000 dollar reward. Why are we doing this? It's because the business mix that we have does not create destination for retail shopping. And so this contest is to, to create more, to enhance the mix of businesses that we have. We're working with the economic development department in Oakland County, using their expertise to coach these entrepreneurs and to market to entrepreneurs at Ortonville County. We are also working with the Michigan SBDC to do the same. It's business consulting for the applicants, and it is their marketing arm that they're able to tap into entrepreneurs that are currently clients of the Michigan SBDC. Ultimately, the phases are simple, there's an application phase, and there is a business plan submission, and then there is a pitch, actual pitch to the panel judges. At each of the steps, second and third step, there is business counseling opportunities for the applicants, not writing and perfecting their business plan, and then there is a pitch or chat where they can find their message to the panel.
Wonderful, thank you. Would you like to tell us where to find that information?
OrtonvilleDpa.org, there's a landing page that you, to the retail challenge, has this information and the applications.
Thank you.
Thanks, ma'am.
And application is fillable and secure.
My question is, I haven't been paying attention, have you been doing this the last few years, or is this a brand new thing?
It has stretched out for a couple reasons. One of which is the septic issues for our vacant properties. It was difficult for us to roll out a, a retail challenge and then have applicants on the other end of the space. So what preceded this, or in the process that the retail challenge was being planned, we also solicited USDA for a grant to create a revolving loan program that commercial property owners can use to upgrade their septic, to allow more options to renovate properties. We received that grant, and actually, Wayne is the lead on the project, and we are fine tuning the final two documents, and it's ready to launch.
Thanks, ma'am.
All right. Thank you very much. And we are ready for item 14, which is our public comments, and those will be non-agenda items only. If you have something to share with us, questions, comments that you'd like to, please remember you have three minutes, so go ahead, please raise your hand, stand up, step forward, and share something with us if you can, please. Bob, please.
Gee, so Mac, that's a lot of time, I only have three minutes. My neighbors knew I was coming to this meeting, so the rain that we had, obviously, was unprecedented. I had an awful lot of rain, but I want you to remember on Schoolhouse, when, I know that there was a review done by the engineering company that Schoolhouse Street was not done directly back by previous council, majority of previous council. We had, we had two lakes, basically, on our street, well, three, if you call the driveway. But now the road dispenses all the water directly off the two cycles. And the drain, if you're familiar with I've provided at four, five Schoolhouses, the drain is approximately two inches higher than what the grade is around it. When it was all said and done, they come in and cut a strip of asphalt out, so now about a foot of the road actually gets to the drain, and that's only from one direction. gets to the drain. And that's only from one direction. Water cannot get to that, excuse me, to the drain from the west. And then we get all the water from Church Street west. So we have quite a bit of property sidewalk and road where that water is running directly down. You know, we already have three homes on that small street that have engineers' septic system. And not that that's totally the problem. We have a lot of high water table. We understand that. We had three basements that flooded to a certain extent. We did our own subcoats outside. One was on, we actually put it on the sidewalk to get it down so far. It's less than six inches deep on the sidewalk, plus then another one that ran most of the day between two houses. So I know you're anxious to see what it does in the park. I have my doubts that it will lower the water table. I think all that's going to do is keep the park clean and people directly adjacent to that will provide them some relief. But I know there's an engineering review been done through, I forget which one of the companies.
Not original.
Right now.
So that I know that's been done and they have suggestions to try. I'll be amazed if they can actually fix that because they raised back then, they raised the road over four inches higher than it was before and actually raised one grain. I don't know. Bob and I stood up, we had the village manager at that time stood out there and said, you know, you don't have to shoot the grain. You could stand back here and say that grain is about two inches higher than about 20 feet away from it. And they swore it down. I don't know what is going to get there and how it's going to stay. I would appreciate it. Keep it in mind if you're trying to make that.
Thanks, Bob.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bob. Thanks.
Anybody else? Paula, please.
I have two things to ask you. One is, I'm just curious, well, I'm more than curious, but it has to do with roads as well. I've heard rumors that the village is looking at redoing roads at some point. I don't know if that's true, false, in the works. A question was then asked about our subdivision when plans were bad and we were told that our subdivision would not be included in that because we were not part of the village.
What's up?
I mean, my state subdivision?
Okay.
Just off the, what was it? So I guess my comment to that is if I'm not if I'm not part of the village, why am I paying village taxes?
Good question.
And my second part of the question is, is that we're being looked at the roads and redoing roads because our roads are, like everywhere else, they are terrible. I mean, my the roads in our sub now are more dirt than anything else. It's all crap. Full holes that come in with the passion. Tomorrow, there's a big hole. The road's breaking up inside. I myself have fallen multiple times and subdivision is catching the edge of a hole, not realizing it was there. And you know, at some point, somebody's going to get hurt. So that was one thing. My other thing, and I did talk to Ryan about this earlier, we seem to have an increase of feral cats. And I don't know that there's a lot on ordinance, the village vote, domestic cats, putting food out for animals, redoing domestic wild animals. There's options to, I said, that's something about the House of Council review, not taken into consideration. I know the situation that we have, but it is directed for some food and house, but for what we have. It puts all the best scans on helpless as well.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
We appreciate it. Thank you. And definitely we'll send that back to Ryan. He knows you have your contact information. So he'll be able to answer your questions about the roads. And I know he said he was looking at the ordinance. So we appreciate it.
Yep. I did look at the ordinance some and I didn't see anything regarding feral cats that we have on the books as of now. And then roads, and I do know that Bob plans to have the crew in your neighborhood this week. And that's not just empty, like, yeah, we're going to fix it right now. It's that he's planning on being up there this week. Ash fault is a tricky thing. And so you got to get a load and use it wisely while you've got it, while it's it's hot. And so that is the plan though, is that you should see and smell them this week playing ash ants in your neighborhood.
Laying ash foam, fixing holes, or what is that?
It'd be patching. Yeah, patching.
Yeah, because to be honest, we're far above with patching.
So if you on your way out, if you drive down Midrin, you'll see some of the patching they did a couple of weeks ago. And it's not small patching. It's more in bigger bigger strips. And and he's been doing this for a long time. And those patches hold up a whole lot better than small ones. That we call it wedging, where you kind of build up the side of the road. So it helps the flow of water too. So the you know how the edges are the first thing to fall away. You build up the outside a little bit so that you can still have the crown going towards the center. There is a plan. I know it's it's a challenge. And you're right that our roads are bad everywhere. It's one that we are we're working on as a as a council, as well as individually. It's something I focus on every day is trying to make our roads better.
What does that mean though? We're working on? Does the village have a plan in motion to redo and work on?
Yes.
Not just to patch holes, but to like redo roads?
We're working on that. We're planning on that. The committee commission, in part of that is creating all the roads in the village and determining who's who's worse. So what we do now first, and then once once we get that completed, which is a little process right now, then we can determine if they start bunching and how we're going to attack the roads.
So what is the timeline for that?
It's not as fast as you want.
Yeah.
It's not tomorrow, but it is is process.
Six months, three years?
I can share with you also.
Like I might say to happen this.
So we did a rating in 2018 and the 2018 roads are still not done because the expenses are absorbent. They are the 2018 roads will cost more than our year annual budget just to do those. So we have done little bits and pieces. This year, we have three roads that we're focusing on. Doesn't mean that can happen unfortunately in that budget, but but we are continuing to focus on the same ones, which are the first three, which are still 2018. And it doesn't sound like a lot, but it is. It's a big deal. We've been working very hard to find monies for those.
So the federal government asks us all this infrastructure that they're talking about, do you think there will be resources available?
I can share with you that one of the biggest challenges we've faced is that the cost of construction for new roads is increasing faster than our revenues are. So we're in a perpetually getting further and further behind because of this. And the money, the federal government, that gets allocated to all the communities and the amount that we get, it will help, but it's not going to be anywhere close to what we need to really bring them all up. And so we're in a losing battle with this because the revenues are always going to fall short and the costs are going up faster than we can, you know, do it.
And I appreciate that. I just.
Yeah. And that's the challenge we have. And that's why we're working with the capital improvement plan, trying to see what we can plan out and how much we can get done each year. But it's it's.
This is a fair, kind of aggressive, maybe a supportive, but you know, it's faster.
But we are spending money this year. We've allocated a significant amount of budget to get moved forward with some of these road projects. Past council, we're reluctant to spend the money because they said, oh, the costs are higher. Maybe they'll come down. They will never come down. We realize we have to spend the money and do what we can with what we've got.
Absolutely. And so is that information like on the village website that like once you have a plan and you have your eyes on the ready?
It's the master plan. I mean, is the.
A CIP will be.
CIP will the capital group plan will be master plan is stuff like that. Definitely stay tuned to meetings because the the council packets have lots more detail in there and those are on the website. You got to kind of look at documents on demand, but there's been lots of good stuff in there. Thank you very much. Great question. Glad to hear.
Paula, good one to look at with your background would be our annual budget, which we just approved the beginning of July. So look at that and see which roads were allotted and where the monies are going. And the local and the major streets are some monies that, you know, we kind of can't move different places based on state and federal laws. So you'll see where it's all broken down. And Ryan would love to have that budget conversation with you. But I know you, you know, when you look at it, you have an eye for it. You'll be able to kind of get an idea. But let's start with that and see an end dialogue, please. We would love.
So can I assume from all of this conversation that this rumor that I heard that our subdivision is excluded from all of this consideration is false?
Absolutely.
It's false.
Anybody in the village limits has the same exact opportunity.
Yes.
To be evaluated based on need of each road.
I think it's set about the placement and the personnel. Because the man who told that, you know, we hear that rumor often. And the two subs, I think, get that a lot.
That's good. That's good news because now you can continue to pay your taxes.
There you go.
Wow.
We definitely appreciate the feedback.
Does the DPW plow your roads? If so, then they're included.
Do we have anybody else? Any other comments? Any other questions? And I'm not cutting you off, Paula, but I will direct you to Ryan because we've asked her for a minute. Anybody else? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, everybody for the input. We appreciate it. Next up is the item from the trustees and the head of final working, I've got to go.
With the key. Oh, sorry.
And that would be, oh, that's I can't think today. That's, yeah.
Would would showers and storm drains, tearing up roads and mixing them with better roads, would they all kind of fit together for capital improvement of the infrastructure of the village? It would seem to me that they could fit. Okay. I think we need to push hard for that. Let the citizens know that that could be a very viable solution to all of this. I think maybe a letter is in there. Urgent. Yeah. I'm done. Thanks.
Anything else?
I'm done.
Sure. Are you done?
I just wanted to say that the although it's been talked about already, but the RQ event downtown with the trucks was phenomenal. I mean, it just really was. We got down here early, so I didn't see the big, big crowds, but there were people at every single spot, people setting out, listening to the music, you know, the fire department was wandering around and the cert team and the DDA, of course. And it just, it just really felt good. It was just a really good hometown gig. And I just really supported it. And I just think it's a phenomenal job that they did. And I would hope we can continue with these kind of events because they are really special.
That's all. Thank you. All right, please.
Yes, I fully agree. The the events DDA puts on are great. They do a tremendous job. As you heard them say, though, they can always use volunteers. I'm glad that K mentioned the cert team. Our cert team also can always use volunteers. So anybody who's looking for ways to give back to the community, help support these events and our community look for, you know, volunteering opportunities with DDA, with cert and with other entities. I would like to just touch real quick. I've been, as you see, I got a plaque for being planning commissioner for many years. And for many years, I've been pushing to get a capital improvement plan because I realize and recognize the need for us to address these issues. And I'm really glad that we now have village manager that is on board with us and really moving forward with it because it just kind of lost traction the past few years. And I think it's it's good. It's great to see it getting back on track because we really need to have that to be able to move forward with providing better infrastructure for our community. It's really important to me and I'm really glad to see we're on track. As I said, it's it's challenging though, because we have very little funding to work with. And with heavily amendments and other things, we get less and less money from the state every year, it seems. And we just keep slipping behind. So we got to get this moving forward. I agree. Other than that, yeah, it was it was a great event. And, you know, hopefully, we can do good things for the community. We are, all of us do care very deeply about this community. We all are trying to do our best to do the best we can with the resources we have. But it's very challenging. So that's that's all I can say.
Melissa, thank you. Melanie, please.
All right. I wanted to thank the village office, Brian, for the ARP. As far as the application and submitting, I don't think deadline is till tomorrow, by the way.
Yeah, certainly.
I mean, you're you're good. You're good. And even you're good. And I know that to me, to all of us, and we're all learning as we go. And I appreciate it because that changes every day. So thank you for all the lift staff for keeping up on that. I appreciate it. We all appreciate it. MML conference, I know we discussed it. I do not feel it is a justifiable expense for me to go. But I know we made a resolution at the last meeting for K to be our representative. So I don't know if that's something you have to attend or not. I do not know. But if you have to, I would support that. But I know for me, I just.
I know Ryan and I had talked about it too. And it is extremely costly.
When I looked at the pricing and then the the agenda, they still didn't even have the full synopsis. I thought this isn't, for me, it is not a justifiable expense, but.
And I have to agree with that. I know, you know, we had talked about waiting, but the problem is our price is going on through all of this. So getting a room over there is it's it's just not, I don't think it's even going to happen. So I don't know what we want to do with the vote or, you know, can we send it, the video conference, can we send it another way where we wouldn't have to incur that expense?
I'll look into it.
Okay.
Follow up the book.
Okay. Great. Thank you. And then, yeah, that way we know we're still represented and did what we needed to do as far as the MML is concerned. I go through the village every day, all the time for many reasons. And I see Ryan out there all the time. I say, thank you. He is out walking around, going to the businesses, meeting with the people. And I'm just really glad that's part of his routine and that is starting to happen again. So it's noticed and that's appreciated. We really do appreciate that. And lastly, just a recommendation, I would like to recommend that Personnel Committee maybe consider bumping, before I move, well, consider bumping the current DPW employee hours from 35 to 40 and adding, that would add an extra 10 hours a week right there. And consider hiring someone such as Pam at the at the substation on a part time basis to do violation enforcement. I think that would really help. So the village manager isn't always the bad guy to the face of that. And then it's also being done that someone is on top of it and it is being checked, whether it's weekly or twice a month. But I wouldn't mind consideration of that instead of hiring a another DPW person for that 10 hours, just bump up the positions we have currently. That would compensate the 10 hours a week. So just a suggestion on that. And that's it.
Thank you. All right. How about Tony, please?
Okay. Well, sorry about missing the last meeting. Most you know what happened. Everything's good. Most of you know what happened, everything's good now. The only thing I've got is, you know, the movies in the park, our family movie nights that I run with Fred and Brandon, they've been good. The next one is going to be at Sledding Hill, August 14th. And that crudes will be that, that movie. And the Sledding Hill conveyor will be working. Just want to bring that up because our next meeting is on the 9th.
What is the movie again?
The crudes, our old VHS, a new age. Kara and I and Fred looked at it and it, I, it's funny, yeah.
I just didn't hear what it was.
But, you know, we, we do these, me being a village resident and, and, you know, I look at Brandon and Hortonville as one big unit and that's why I do those along with Fred, so and Kara, in person. So come on up, there's going to be hot dogs, it's all going to be free and a couple more things, so just, you know, come on up. That's all I have.
How do the kids go down that?
I'm sorry?
How do the kids go down that? It's just like Bearcat.
Yeah, well, that's to take people up and then the kids can just tumble down if they want. Yeah, I mean, in the past, we, we've had issues because we have a resident drop hog. We bashed it back because I ran the, what, stuffed through conduits, but, you know, everything's good and it is working. We checked it four weeks ago. Even took a video and sent it to Fred and it's like, the conveyor just happened to say, yeah, he goes, great. I said, good. So everything's great with that. So, yeah, we're, you know, that way people can get up on the hill. And the other thing we're doing is we tested out over here at the park on the last one, there's actually going to be two speakers up front and two speakers in the back, so it's going to be a lot better sound. And it is really fun, even if you just sit back and look at all the families that are coming out and, you know, and I would pick on the teenagers, but I see more teenagers on their phones because, you know, they're with their friends and that.
That's what they do.
But it's the groups, the families that are just, the moms, dads, grandparents, just out there and they're enjoying that time. And that is what's really important. And the more people see that, the more people talk about it, the more we get back to a whole family time, and that's what I'm for. That's about that. Thanks.
Thank you. Much appreciated. I would just like to give many, 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 many thanks to the DPW. I know Bob referenced the lakes on his street, Crosman Park was a huge lake and the cleanup was amazing and fast as usual. They are, they had a lot of storm debris to clean up as well and they did an amazing job on top of their normal tasks. So we definitely are going to miss having Will this week. Another reminder that the farmer's market is every Saturday night at 2:00. Come on down and join us. Not only do the vendors change, the same vendors may or may not be there, don't say they won't, but the product selection is growing and it's good. Come down early and come down, check out everything going in. Also, thank you to the recreation department last week with the three-on-three basketball tournament, bounce houses, a petting zoo. Well received, lots of people down there, we had a blast. Somebody might have got stuck in the bounce house, but I won't mention that and there are photos. Also, Ryan had a comment which Melanie kind of bounced off of, which, which I have to say we do need to possibly consider. We took away the stipend for driving around town, but Ryan doesn't have a uniform expense like the DPW guys do and Ryan's on his feet all day long as well in town. So that's something to consider and you pointed that out and I had to laugh. We do appreciate, so many businesses and residents point out that they have seen Ryan and they have met Ryan and they are very, very happy to know Ryan. More feedback in a month than the managers in years spending time downtown. And that's really important, I think, to all of us to make sure we had a face to our village. We really, really appreciate you. I cannot tell you the number of people that comment on a concert.
Yes, presence.
So thank you very, very much. And it's not about the face, it's about all the work you're doing while you're out there. But we do appreciate, it's not unnoticed, so please know that your hard work is appreciated.
Thank you.
And that's all that I have. Looks like we're moving on to entertaining motion to adjourn. Unless Ryan had anything, I'm sorry.
No.
Okay. Do we have a support?
Support.
Who was that over there? Was that Pat?
Go ahead, Tony.
Tony gets one in. All right, so we have a motion by trustee Diana, supported by trustee Randazzo. Any questions? All right. And please, can't talk, we'll call those.
Yes.
Yes.
Haven?
Yes.
Nigal?
Yes.
Randazzo?
Yes.
Nyla?
Right?
Yes. Motion carries seven zero and it is 8:36 and we have motion to adjourn.
I said seven zero or six one.